Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the special city council meeting of Wednesday, August 14, 2019. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller? Hoyer? Hollein? Lalum?
Here.
Manti? Rademski?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Why?
Present.
Thanks.
All right. The first item on the agenda is the public comment period. If anyone is here that would just like to speak about any topic, this is your time. Please come forward. Seen none, we'll move on. Item two is approval of the agenda. I have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lalum. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number three is a presentation, review, and public input on the mayor's proposed 2020 city budget. The proposed budget book is available for review at the finance office in City Hall or on the city website under the Finance Department. And I intend to do the presentation from the podium. And we'll take a little break. Normally, the budget takes eight, 10, 12 hours, some years. We're doing it differently this year, and we're hoping that it'll move much more quickly this way. I'll be making the presentation, and the staff will be available for questions if you have any. But otherwise, I'll be making the presentation with a PowerPoint. And we'll break around 6 o'clock for a meal for the council members. And I'm sure there'll be some left over if anyone else wants to join in. But for now, I will just run over. Okay. So in the past, we've delved right into the weeds with the budget hearings. And this year, I would like to start with a general overview. We have several new council members. And also for the general public that may not totally understand what it is we do with the budget. So there's some basic questions that most people probably have. How does a city get money? How does the city then spend that money? And how can a citizen participate in deciding where and how that money is spent? So if you live in the city of Watertown, this is your money. It's the people's money that we're talking about. And the citizens elect a council to be stewards of the people's money. Every year, the city council estimates the amount of money that will be available for the next year and appropriates or designates how that money will be spent. So how do they do that? Well, first of all, the Finance Department tracks every bit of money that the city receives and every penny of money that the city spends. Everything is tracked by the Finance Department. And the department heads work with the finance officer and with the mayor to project the revenues based upon our history and also looking toward the future of what we think the trends are going to be. The finance officer, meanwhile, compiles all of this data and works with the mayor to estimate the available funds. And also with the departments to estimate how they're going to spend that money. The departments make requests to the mayor, and then the mayor proposes a budget for city council consideration. So that's what I've done. And after tonight, it's up to the city council. And generally, they'll make changes to what I've proposed. So in the past, I've been very conservative in my projection of revenues and my expenditures. So I have a, probably my comfort zone is loosening up a little bit. The second year I did a budget, I gave myself a little more room. I would like to see expenditures equal to revenues. But I do understand that we will spend less than we project to spend, and we're going to gather in a little bit more revenue than we anticipate. So you can have a little bit of a gap between there. Now, I may still be more conservative than the council wants to be, in which case they'll add more expenditures. Or maybe I'll be less conservative than they want to be. So they'll tweak that. But this is the starting point. I'll make the presentation. And it may seem like there's one big pot of money, and we can do whatever we want with all that money, but it's really not that simple. There are 17 different funds that are included in this budget. And each one of those funds has different rules and regulations which go with it. And the funds come to us in different ways. So it's really not one big pot of money. Instead, like, we have a pot with taxes in it. Actually, we have different kinds of taxes. So there really are several tax buckets. We have service charges, which are sources of revenue. We also have fees. Fees for when you join a program at the rec or pay something if you don't turn a library book in. That would be a fine. So different bucket there. And then we also have grants. And there actually are 17 different buckets. And each one has its own rules and regulations. Now, this is kind of what it looks like with all of the funds. I wanted to put these out here just to show you relatively how these funds stack up. And the color is meaningful here. Some of these bars are blue, and I hope you can see that. Some of the bars are blue, and those are enterprise funds or funds for which we charge, we provide a service and we charge for that service. So like our sewer fund is an enterprise fund. We provide sewer service, and we charge for that. The other, we have six different enterprise funds, and they're in blue. We also have tax funds, and those are the purplish-pink ones on there. The tax funds are the primary support for the general government. And you see the second bar there is the general fund. That's the second largest fund in the city. And that fund, we really don't have a lot of control over because it's set. We can't control how much tax that we collect. We try to encourage people to spend money in our town because when they do, we collect tax. But we can't just crank up the tax if we need more money in that fund. So it's not very flexible. None of the tax funds are very flexible. But you can see we have the general fund, the capital improvement fund, the BBB fund, and general obligation bonds, and tax increment financing district funds. Those are all tax funds, and really not a whole lot of flexibility with them. The green bars are fee funds. And we have Park and Rec, Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, E-911. And so the library fines is also a fee fund. You pay a fee when you're late on a book. The casualty reserve and the Upper Big Sioux River Watershed Project, I put them in the category of other. And you can see library fines and casualty reserve are so small, they're inconsequential in the big picture. Now, you might see that there's asterisks on three of these bars, and that's for a couple of reasons. The other bars are all based upon the budget. The bars that have an asterisk by them are the municipal utility funds, which are funds of the city, but they're not controlled by the city council. So we aren't considering those funds tonight. And the council doesn't have a say over those. They are city funds, though. Those are also the people's dollars. And they don't budget the same way we do, with the enterprise funds being separate from electric, water, and gas. So I couldn't pull them off, plus they haven't done their budget yet. They do their budget later in the year than we do. But I've used the 2019 budgeted revenues as a comparison. So the tallest bar is the electric fund. It's over $30 million. The next closest fund is the general fund, which is considerably less. So this is how they all stack up against one another. So the various different sources and uses of these money, I will talk about the categories one at a time. First of all, enterprise funds. These are the user charges for services. And as I mentioned, we have six enterprise funds. The sanitary sewer, the solid waste, and the airport enterprise funds are all overseen by the city council. So I'll talk about them first. So the sanitary sewer and the solid waste completely fund their operations with the utility rates that are set by the city council. And those rates are set to cover the needs. And plus, they make a contribution toward the general government because these are revenue generating funds that we do have control over. Whereas we can't just increase the amount of money that we tax. We can increase our utility rates if we want to. And the city council sets those for sanitary sewer and solid waste. The airport enterprise fund is not self-supporting. About 40% of the airport operation costs are covered by charges. So that one still requires transfers from other revenue sources to break even. Then the other three enterprise funds are electric, gas, and water. And those are all overseen by the Municipal Utility Board, which is a separate board from the city council. They're not elected officials. They're appointed by the mayor. So it is the duty of the Municipal Utility Board to set the rates. And similarly to the sanitary sewer and solid waste enterprise funds, the rates set by the Municipal Utility Board cover the needs, plus they make a contribution toward general government. So the sales and use tax funds are the ones that were purple. Those are the first and second penny sales tax that you hear about. It's 2% charge on sales and service. And we consider them separately. They go into different funds. The first penny goes into the general fund and may be used for any lawful purpose. The second penny goes into the capital improvement fund, but that's restricted. We can't just take money out of there. It's restricted to acquisition of land, capital improvements like road construction, ambulance and medical emergency vehicles, transfers to the 911 fund, firefighting vehicles and equipment, debt retirement, and study or planning for potential future capital improvements. That's all that we can spend the capital improvement fund on. So we actually, even though the capital improvement fund has less money than the general fund because the general fund also includes property taxes and some transfers and other items, the general fund being the junk drawer of our taxes, everything goes in there. And the, all the non-revenue generating departments are supported by the general fund. So while most of the funds that the city has are doing just fine, and you'll see that tonight, the general fund is tight. And it's been tight for many years. And every year, we just keep tightening that belt tighter and tighter. And actually, I've come to the conclusion that we really cannot expect the 1980s method of funding our general government are going to work to support our 2020 style of living. It's just not the same today as it was back then. That general fund is so heavily reliant on sales tax revenue. And we can ask people to shop local, shop local, but people are going to drive to Sioux Falls. They're going to drive to Fargo and Minneapolis, a lot more than they used to. And they spend their money elsewhere. So we can't control that. So it's not keeping up. And we're going to talk about how we can get around this. So we do have another sales tax fund, which, as you recall, was a much, much smaller little purple bar. That's the BBB tax, the grocery receipts tax, bed, board, and booze tax. We charge that tax on hotel campsites and other lodging, sales of alcohol, dining and carryout food, and entertainment. And whereas we do charge these taxes on the sales tax revenue too, this fund doesn't get to be charged on all of the merchandise that people buy. It's only these specific things, so it's a much smaller fund. And it's much more heavily restricted. Very specifically, this fund, these dollars can only be spent on civic center, auditorium, athletic facility, and that includes the operations of those items and on promotion and advertisement of the city. So it's this fund that pays for our event center. And it's this fund that we use to make transfers into the Park and Rec department. And we also use this fund to support the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce because they're promoting and advertising the city. We also have fees that we collect. And we collect them on our quality of life amenities for the most part, like the library and our Park and Rec facilities. They generally stay in the department which collected them, and they tend not to be very large funds. They're special revenue funds, and they help to pray the cost of providing whichever amenity collected it. So Park and Rec, Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, library fines. So I'm going to move right into the general fund now. And you can follow in your book, although I'm not going to go through the budget page by page. My presentation just picks out the items which were more significant because I don't want people to get lost in the minutia of $1,000 here and $1,500 there. So you can ask any kind of question you want about any of these things. And we'll go in order in the book. If you want to ask a question, just raise your hand and I'll address it. Or if someone from the public has a question about that, just come up and approach the microphone, and we'll get it answered. But otherwise, I'm just going to zip through here and keep going until I get stopped. So starting with the general fund. We have, and every slide is going to show you what the significant changes were for our current year and what the expected significant changes are in my budget for 2020. So in 2019, there was a decrease in attorney miscellaneous revenues. I guess Matt wasn't charging enough fines this year, but maybe we're going to get more on the ball with that, huh? We budgeted for a property tax increase of $130,000 last year, and sales and tax revenue increased $475,000. Now, these are budget, not actual, because we're not done with 2019, obviously. For the budget in 2020, we estimated a property tax increase of $144,000. Actually, it's not really an estimate, right? The county tells us. Oh, Matt wants to defend himself.
I just wanted to make sure that this was clarified. So the utilities used to pay us for the attorney services. And they no longer do that because they have their own attorney now, so.
You are exonerated.
I just want to make sure. Okay, all right, okay.
It's all good, Matt. Yes?
Just a point of clarification. When you say property tax increase, that's due to values of properties increasing, not due to, or is it due to the levy went up? Would you clarify that?
The levy went up a little, and also property values went up. But the county tells us what that number is. Kristin and I, Kristin doesn't guess that, right? So we don't have any control over that. We tell it what it is, and we put it in the budget. The sales and use tax increase now, the budget for that, there is nobody telling us what this is going to be, and we don't have a crystal ball. We know that we're going to lose out on a pretty good revenue source when we stop collecting sales tax revenue on internet service provision. That is part of the reason that the sales and use tax increase for 2020 budget is less than it was for the 2019 budget. So that's one item. We're expecting 100,000 or 100,000 more interest than we had last year. Ambulance charges, yes?
I've got a question. Maybe, I'm not sure if I'd direct it to you or to Kristin. As we look at our budget book, I think I know where you came up with your sales tax number for 2020. It looked like you were essentially taking 2018 numbers, increasing it by 3%, and then 3% again to come to 2020, and then knocking off a couple hundred thousand dollars of loss on the internet sales. Is that fairly close, Sarah, what I just?
Well, you know, we, yes and no. I mean, Kristin and I talked back and forth, and we felt that was comfortable.
My question, I guess I'll direct it toward Kristin. When I look at your projected numbers for 2019 for sales tax, you're actually coming in quite a bit less than what we are budgeting for 2019. I mean, we've been running strong for sales tax collection. So I guess I'm questioning, what is the basis for the lower number for the projected 2019 sales tax number, Kristin?
And the second half projections are always a little bit kind of wishy-washy. I mean, I hate to say that, but they are. We just don't know. So I, we kind of, with the projections, I don't always rely on those so much. But you are correct. When we did the budgeting, we looked at 18's actual. And then we are projecting the 3%. And then off of that is how we did the 2020 budget. So yeah, the second half projection for sales tax is kind of a little bit of what we're seeing in the first half, but also a little bit taking into account 2018's second half. So the second half of 19 is, it's kind of up in the air. But we do use what happened in 18 for the second half. So right now, we're looking strong for the first half of 19, but you always do see a couple months that dip in the second part. So it's kind of a combination that we use for that.
So end of the day, you two are on the same page as far as what you're coming up with as far as a 2020 budget number?
Yes.
Okay.
That is a true statement. So, and we're also expecting an increase in ambulance charges based on visiting with the fire chief and looking for an increase in billing permits. So some of this is just a gut feeling about what we know is coming down the pike, what we're seeing for subdivisions, and what kinds of development inquiries we're receiving today. It's a crystal ball, and it is an estimate. So the general fund personnel expenses are going up fairly significantly. This includes salaries, health insurance, retirement contribution, and insurance premiums. So there were the increases in 2019 where we added a street maintenance worker. We added a patrol officer, and we removed a records clerk position from the police department. This year, nobody's getting any new employees because I asked every single department head to freeze their costs that they had any control over. Everybody's budget was frozen at the 2019 level. And part of the reason that I did that was that we're doing a wage study right now. And we believe, based on some pretty good evidence, that the city employees are underpaid compared to other cities around us, our size. So the wage study will tell us whether that's true or not. It's been 15 years, 18 years since we did a wage study. And it's well overdue. And I want to pay the city employees a fair wage. I'm not trying to give them a giant bonus and get ahead of everybody else. But I do think that we should pay the city employees a fair wage. And I think we should do it immediately when we know what a fair wage is. We should make those adjustments. And I expect to make them right away as soon as we have the study results back. We won't, we don't have them yet, and we won't have them for a while. So Kristin and I sat down and really, position by position, gave our gut estimate of what we thought was a fair wage for the various different positions as well as we could. And we think we've made a fairly accurate projection, and that is included in the budget. And so that is the only thing that accounts for this growth, although health insurance premium did increase. But we are budgeting to pay the city employees what they're worth. And we think that's more than what we're paying them right now. We do have contracts with the unions that we have to pay a certain growth in a cost of living adjustment on those employees. And the difference between that amount and what Kristin and I have projected, the impact on the general fund is just shy of $300,000, like $260,000 more than we would be doing if we weren't doing a wage study. So just for the relative comprehension of what the impact is. But we are adding one employee to the zoo. And the reason that we're doing that is the Zoological Society agreed to pay that for two years because I had frozen the budget. I said, no new employees. And they just had an accreditation visit. And they're getting severe warnings that the zoo is in jeopardy of losing its accreditation if we don't add this position. So that was very generous of the Zoological Society. And I do believe the tightness in the general fund budget will disappear as we figure out ways of moving forward. Oh, Park and Rec, okay. Never mind. The zoo personnel will be in a different fund. But there are no new employees in this budget. There was one part-time reduction in force where a person left employment, and then we didn't fill that position. So that's a, makes it easy when you're not having to eliminate a position with a person in it. But anyway, the budget increase for personnel expenses is $597,500. So the operating, Glenn?
Maybe we're going to touch on it, Mayor, but I can see throughout the book we're projecting a pretty healthy increase for health insurance. Have we gotten some preliminary numbers on that, or what are we basing that on?
No, it's the same percentage that we've used every year just because it kind of always gives us the wiggle room. I use around the 10%. And we have some great years where we don't even come close to that. And we've had a couple years where we're right at that. So that's kind of that safety net just because health insurance is one of those where you have one bad year and you're right up at that 10%, so.
Okay, so moving on. In the general fund operating expense budget, which includes rentals, maintenance, supplies, travel and training, utilities, all of the things that we need to operate, we're seeing a decrease in that budget because I asked people to stick to their 2019 budget in every respect and no new ads for capital improvements. Now, I want to explain how I instructed the departments because when I was doing that, we'd been working on the budget since really February and talking about this, wondering and suspecting that we were going to have a general fund issue. I didn't know what the revenue projections were until July because we wait till we have six months in before we do the projections of revenue. So prior to that, we're working only on expenses. And I tell you what, last year and the year before, when I did the budget, was horrible. Trying to squeeze the requests that the departments had asked for into the much smaller revenue projection, I was sick over it. So this year, I said, just assume your budget is frozen, and then submit that first, and then make an additional request for what you really need to have if we can find additional revenue. Then when the revenue projections come in, if I've got some leeway there, I will be granting wishes instead of cutting requests. So unfortunately, I didn't get to the point where I could grant wishes. But we did break even with what I will describe here. So last year, the increased contribution to the Watertown Boys and Girls Club was $240,000. That was the entire contribution. And it only says increase because that was being paid for out of the BBB fund prior to this. And I personally like to follow rules. That's not a lawful expense or use of the BBB fund, which is restricted to civic. which is, is restricted to civic, city-owned things and promotion of the city, which the Boys and Girls Club is not. So that was a transfer out of the general fund. And that was pretty painful because that's a big number. But that's where it sits today as well. The increase in contribution to Watertown Development Company of $100,000 out of the general fund last year was a one-time thing. And a transfer to the airport was increased last year, 100,000. And the transfer to the event center was decreased by 50,000. And that's because the event center is the appropriate use of the BBB funds as our park and rec. And so last year, I took more money out of BBB to put toward the things that it's meant for. Councilman Robey?
The numbers you have, they add up to, what, 490? But you look from 18 to 19, that was a big jump. What, what made up the rest of that, that huge jump from 18 to 19?
Well, and part of that was the, the Boys and Girls Club. It had a pretty big impact. Do you remember, Kristen, what else would have contributed to that?
The other thing to remember too is 18 is the actual, 19 is the budget.
Oh, true, right.
So it, we had a pretty good 18 year, so we came in under, so.
Yep. Thank you, Kristen. So this year, the significant changes, that was a one-time contribution to Watertown Development Company. Does not appear in the budget again this year. Okay, now, this one's controversial. I have budgeted a decrease in the fire hydrant rental fee. And, and here's my thinking. The, the city has those enterprise funds where we provide a service and we charge for it. So we take our sewer enterprise fund, we do not send ourselves a sewer bill. And so we don't pay a sewer bill. We provide ourselves with sewer service, but we do not bill ourselves for sewer service. The same goes for garbage service. We provide ourselves with garbage service, but we do not send ourselves a bill for that. So we just are even there. We, we give ourselves those services for free. That's an advantage of having a city-owned utilities. We don't have to send ourselves a bill. Then in addition to that, 8% of their budgeted revenue goes back into the general fund and is very critical in helping us to support the general operation of the city for the non-revenue generating departments like police and fire and library and all the other departments which cannot support themselves. And that's a perfectly legal way to do that. Now, it's a little bit different with the municipal utility enterprise funds, which the city council doesn't control. We do send ourselves a water, gas, and electric bill. And we do pay for those services, just like everyone else. We pay what is due from the amount of water, sewer, water, gas, and electric which we use. And then the municipal utilities, this is coincidental, but they transfer back into the general fund, an amount which is almost exactly equal. So it's about $1.3 million that we pay municipal utilities for water, gas, and electric service. And then they put back in our general fund that same amount. But then, they send us a bill for hydrant rental, and that comes out of the sales tax revenue of the general fund to keep the water, gas, and electric rates low. And so it's more than half of what they transfer in that we pay back in hydrant rental and in street lighting fees. And I would argue that the hydrant rental and the street lighting fees could really be transferred to all of the citizens on their utility bills. And, and we don't do that because we want the utility rates to be low. But it's no secret that we have the lowest utility rates around. And the, the reason that I did this is that they have budgeted reserves in the municipal utilities funds. And this year, their revenues are higher than the budgeted reserves. And they have ample reserves set aside for emergency things that come up. They're, they're keeping reserves for those purposes. And we're in a spot, they're a city department, and, you know, they, they can do this, it's a legal thing. Now, after I did the budget, I have spoken with municipal utilities, and they are not okay with what I'm suggesting here. And the, I've talked to all of the board members, and some of them expressed that they would increase the transfer, but they don't want it to come by not sending us a hydrant bill or not paying that, that we would continue to pay that, and then they'd give us a bigger transfer. So it would be nice if municipal utilities would come to the table in the same way the other enterprise funds support the general non-revenue generating departments. That's not what we're asking. If, if we ask municipal utilities to set aside 8% of their revenue, like the sewer enterprise fund does, and like the garbage enterprise fund does, it would be $5 million. We're not asking them to do that at all. But what this would do is make it even to where we're paying a bill, but they're paying back, putting back into the general fund the amount equal to the amount that we're paying them for the service. So we'd essentially be giving ourselves free electric, water, and gas. Now, that's not up to me, that's not up to the council, that's up to the municipal utilities board. And this is really a community question of, our leaders in our community have to answer this question because the general fund doesn't just belong to the city council. The general fund belongs to all of the citizens, as do all of the departments within the city budget, including the municipal utilities budget. So I, I know that they don't like it, I, I get that. But I'm asking them for an amount that is significantly less than the extra that they're making above their budgeted revenue. So they were expecting excess revenue that they could put in their reserves. And they're, they're generating more than that. So this will not affect the rates. This is money that they have that is not in their budget. It's extra money. And so it won't affect their rates at all to transfer this. And I expect this conversation, this is probably the single most controversial part of my recommended budget. And I, I'm telling the council, this is the way it is, and it is kind of out of your hands. But as a community, we need to decide what we're going to do about this little problem that we have with the general fund. Because sales tax is just not keeping up with our demand for police protection, for fire protection, for library service, for engineers and finance officers, and all of the non-revenue generating functions of our community. So it's a pretty big deal, and this is definitely not the end of the conversation. So we'll see what happens. But I, I need to note that if we do change the, the way that municipal utilities bills us or transfers money in, it will change the shape of the graph as well. So that needs to be noted. We're also increasing the transfer to the park and rec fund by $200,000. And we're increasing the transfer to the airport fund by $200,000. So this is the budget for general fund. Now, in the capital outlay, you can see there's a big jump. And I, I, that deserves some explanation. But first of all, I'll show you what was in last year's budget. The significant purchases were computers and software, snow removal loader with a blade, and library books and materials. This year, the budgeted proposed increases are even more toward computers and software, police patrol vehicles and firearms, which were cut back last year, street department, uh, street sweeper, $290,000. A street department tractor with side mower, $120,000. Snow removal motor grader with V plow is $345,000. These are giant expenses. And snow removal, single-axle truck with sander and plow for $160,000. So how can I do that when our budget is tough? We also have a forestry tractor loader. And, and the answer is, we have been setting money aside in capital outlay for these purchases. And we have money to pay for them. So it's not coming out of the revenues that were generated in 2020 solely. Most of it's coming from money that we've been setting aside every year, like we do, for our capital improvement plan for the next five years. So it's, it's not as bad as it looks. But anyway, here is a summary. Total revenues that we're projecting, just over 17 million, which is an increase of $919,000 or 5.7%. Total expenditures, 18 point, 18,972,000, which is an increase about 4.2%. And how this all patches out, so we're, there's a $1.92 million deficit. But 1.125 of that is capital outlay that we had set aside in years past to pay for that. So it's really only a $797,000 deficit. But again, this is where we project our revenues conservatively, and we project our expenses conservatively. Our expenses will be a little bit less, and our revenues will probably be a little bit more. So this is my comfort level. It's just shy of $800,000 difference, and I feel pretty good about that. Now, the city council may want to extend that gap a little, or they might want to close it a little. But it seems like a big number, but I think it's realistic. So it really, though, reflects a freeze. And this is not a comfortable budget for anyone. Every single department feels shorted because I tightened that belt. And the city council last year and the year before loosened the belt a little after I had tightened it. And, and they may choose to do that again this year. But I have frozen everybody's budget, not just the non-revenue generating departments. Everyone, even the enterprise funds, have been frozen. And I might add, if municipal utilities feels like they cannot afford to increase their transfer to the general fund, I would ask that they freeze their budget as well because they too are a department of the city of Watertown. And those are, you know, they might as well commiserate with us, they're one of our departments. So it's important that I tell you what requests were not met. And you can see this by going line by line in the budget book and looking at the request line and comparing it to the mayor's budget line. But I'll just do it for you here, these are the big ones. There were many personnel requests. An HR generalist are, usually a rule of thumb is that you will have one HR professional or human resource professional for every 100 employees. The city of Watertown has 220 full-time employees and another 80 full-time equivalents. So that's around 300 full-time equivalent employees. We should really have three human resource people. And it's a lot of work for an, one individual. So there's an HR generalist, the IT department, oh my gosh, those guys are amazing. We would go crashing down if we didn't have such a fantastic IT department. But they need help too, because computer demands are not decreasing, they're constantly increasing. So they've requested an IT department content manager and an IT department help desk technician. The engineering department has requested an increase in temporary salaries. And the police have requested an additional patrol officer and a part-time record clerk and an overtime increase. The fire department has requested a firefighter EMT and an increase in overtime. The street department has requested a street maintenance worker and an increase in temporary salaries. This all totals $551,500. And, and I will tell you, every single one of these requests is valid. And if we do end up generating more revenue than we think, I think we should add these. And I would like the council to work with me to prioritize which ones will meet first because every single one of these employees is needed. We've been on a non-growth pattern really strictly for a long time, and it's, we're starting to crack, you know? We're not providing the level of service that the community is demanding. So I think all of these requests are valid, but I have not met them by my budget. There are some capital outlay requests which were also not met. Various information technology equipment, which is computers. The police department requested more AEDs, garage door tables, and equipment. Ambulance equipment has been requested. Library has requested carpet chairs and floor scrubber. I know, although it wasn't written in the budget book, that they would like to increase the budget for books because that's been severely cut back. The building services has requested a new vehicle. I mean, the vehicles that we drive are pretty much, well, sometimes we get the castoffs from municipal utilities, and we drive them until they die. And it's not always the most cost-effective thing to do, but we don't get new vehicles generally. The building services vehicle was not new when we got it, and it's, it really needs to be replaced. So these total 208,000. Additionally, well, I think there was some misunderstanding. I've had staff members tell me they misunderstood what I meant, asking them to come back and request additional funds. There might be more things in the budget which aren't listed here. And, and I know one of those is for the, it's coming out of a different fund. But I, I heard about that in the, in the library books. I think there was a confusion there as well that would come out of this fund. So this number might grow, actually, if the department heads come back and see that something they really needed wasn't on this list. But anyway, these are unmet needs that I would really, really like to meet. And there are some ways. I mean, we shouldn't bury our head in the sand and just be sad about the revenues not keeping up with our new lifestyle. We need to be creative and figure out ways to generate the revenue that we need so that we don't have this problem ongoing. Councilman Villahora?
Sarah, maybe at a, maybe you're going to get to a time, you know, as we saw what the unmet needs were, particularly the personnel requests, and we've got most of the department heads sitting there. I, I guess as a council member, I'd like to, to get some feedback from some of those people as far as the, their needs or their, you know, from their officer, from their side of it. I mean, I'm not arguing with what you're saying, Mayor, but I guess I would like to hear what, you know, somebody might have to say if it's a pressing need that we need to consider. So I guess I, I'd open it up to whoever might, you know, want to come up and visit.
Sure. Department heads?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I guess if I could start, mine was probably one of the smaller ones up there. But intentionally so because I too see and realize the need throughout the city departments that I didn't want to necessarily, you know, request additional full-time staff. But the level we're at right now with our part-time staff that was recently approved, where we hired back some part-time engineering services, has been a great help in the engineering department. So to continue that into next year, I felt would carry us along and continue to get some of our new staff trained and kind of see how things go from there. And I can't necessarily speak for the rest of the public works divisions. I know Rob's here tonight, but in the streets had some requests in there as well. But I do know just from working with them and some of the other public works divisions over the last year before we became a unified public works department, that there are a lot of maintenance operations that go unmet throughout the year. Some of those include some of the street maintenance aspects. And Rob can certainly speak more in tune to those needs and some of the demands from the community that he hears about.
It's working? Yeah, here we go. Yeah, our department, it really comes down to, we're still understaffed for what the taxpayers are demanding. You know, better roads, quicker service with plowing and sweeping. It's really what it comes down to. So the, the more staff we have, the quicker it gets done. So the more staff we have, the quicker it gets done.
Thank you. And I mean it sincerely. Every single one of these requests is valid. There's not a frivolous one on the list. And there's probably more that would be on there if people would really admit it. And I do have ways coming up here. I'm going to tell you about how we can get back on the right track. So it's not all doom and gloom. I am hopeful, I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to meet these needs. But it's going to take a concerted effort. It's going to take a change of, of the way we do things. Because the way we're doing it isn't going to cut it forever. And we're not in a situation yet that we're having a disaster when it comes to our budget. But if we continue on this path, we, I could see that we could get there at some point. So let's not pretend this isn't happening. We are not keeping up. So how else can we fund this general fund for these departments which have no source of revenue? Did someone have a question? Councilman Bueller?
I just, I want to support Rob's situation especially. I think we kind of passed you over last year. I don't know that we did that great a job the year prior. And I think from an equipment standpoint, but also from a personnel standpoint. I think we have to be really careful moving forward here on how we start staffing and how we start hiring people. I think we got to prioritize these things and public safety. Obviously, we look at that one. That's normally a priority for us. But I, we got to really be cautious here, I think. Because once we do this, this is going to stay for a long, long time. And then we're already talking about initial, additional revenue streams for the community. And I hate to see us do any more than that, of that than we have to do.
Right.
So my caution to the rest of my council friends here is, let's be very, very careful with this.
Right. And what my suggestion is, if you feel that the eight hundred thousand dollar gap between revenue and expense is too conservative, and maybe we could go nine hundred thousand or a million, then we could throw a few of these in here. But also, remember, I've budgeted seven hundred fifty-six, or sixty thousand coming from municipal utility. And they may say no. And if they say no, then we're going to double the deficit. And I, you know, I don't know that we can add any employees under those conditions. So, yes, Chief?
Thank you. I believe I handed out a little PowerPoint for everyone. Just wanted to touch base a little bit on our situation at Watertown Fire Rescue on the EMS assignment employee, which is a program we started a few years back. If you notice on the, on the graph there, calls by time of day, you'll notice how it arches up. Starts at about six in the morning and goes to about seven at night, actually about nine at night. So what we tried to do a few years ago is enter into our system a different type of employee, which is a EMS assignment, which basically focuses in on, on the ambulance. So our goal back then was to add an additional ambulance crew of two people seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. This took a special type of schedule. And it would require four employees when it was totally finished, when totally implemented. And it's really worked out well. If you see the shaded area in gray right now, that, that, that shows a twelve-hour schedule that we're actually running on. And we actually have two employees currently scheduled on that, on that pitman schedule, which is a twelve-hour schedule, seven days a week. So we actually have one EMT extra on that ambulance. And that really provides a lot of extra help with our EMS, our emergency call runs, our 911 dispatching runs. It's really showed a great, significant improvement. If you look on page two of that, and if anybody doesn't have a copy, I got a few more, so I'll hand them out. So page two of that, the last, the last five years. Over the last five years, our calls for service, our ambulance calls actually, maybe jump ahead two slides, or that's the time of day. So I'm on this one right here. You'll notice the ambulance calls for service increased 21% over the last five years. Also, the fire calls for service increased 35% over the last five years. So that's just kind of a little, little graph on how busy we are getting over the last five years. We actually have, are running over five thousand calls for service right now. So. Okay, this slide here, and I won't take much of your time. You'll notice in 2016, we, we were running at a hundred and two thousand, almost a hundred and three thousand dollars in overtime. You'll notice in 2016, we implemented the first forty-hour EMT. In 2017, on the very start, we implemented the second forty-hour employee. So our, our overtime decreased actually about 32%, down in 2018, down to sixty-nine thousand. So we're currently sitting on two employees. And we'd like to eventually get to four employees, which would really help us out. There's a lot of times we have three to five ambulance calls within a 20-minute period. And it really taxes our service providing EMS support and stuff. What we'd like to get to is four. What that would really give us is we could run two concurrent, or concurrent calls of two at any time on the ambulance and never accrue any overtime from that. Also, it would help with our, our continuing our relationship with the hospital and providing inter-facility transfers. So we would like to eventually get a little bit closer. As, as we said, we're, we're kind of in desperate need of eventually getting there. Our overtime is creeping back up and our call volumes, we're not sure. They've, they've kind of leveled off, but we're still trying to recoup from that, that increase of 21% over the years. But, yes.
I have a question, Chief. What do you attribute, don't, I know this kind of sounds like a dumb question. What do we attribute this increase, this big increase in ambulance transfers to? I know, yeah, we got to put more people in these things and haul them around.
Yeah, so that's a good question, Bruce. Basically, it's kind of a national trend. And it's, more people are using the emergency services now than ever. And, you know, we're getting to be an aging population. The baby boomers are retiring at ten thousand a day. And I think we're seeing a little bit of that. But it, it's a little sporadic, but it's kind of a national trend that, that our EMS calls are going up. Okay.
Councilwoman Manti?
I just would like to have Chief add a little bit of a statement about how much work they've done year after year on getting grants to fund equipment and some of these other things. Because I think it's important for people to know that you don't just walk up and say, you know, we need money. You work very hard at looking for and applying for grants. And I commend you on that. But maybe you could even give the public and the rest of the council a guesstimate as to how much in the last, these last same years, you probably.
So I believe we're averaging about seventy thousand roughly a year in grants. And that includes a lot of our training that we provide to our staff is from grants. Some of our equipment, Homeland Security grants. We do, so a lot of our radios and our air packs have been purchased on grant, grant funds. And so we're really conscious of making sure we're reaching out. Actually, we got one from Firehouse Subs, a one-time grant for some air packs. And we just got that last year. We've also received a lot of grants when we built Station Two. That was built with a lot of grant dollars. So we're always trying to improve on those grants as much as possible, so. The only other, the only other point I would really like to point out is we're very proud in Watertown of our ISO two rating. And, you know, we're right there in a bubble. And we'd sure like to, by adding one staff, it would basically improve that, keep us on track so we would never revert back to a three. Actually, we're eighty-one point nine nine, I believe on that. And that's just barely a two. So adding one staff in the future would, would, would help that, so. Yeah, so there's our ISO. And like I said, we're, we're always looking at that, making sure we never slip back. But that's just the benefit of adding one staff. It's, it's the main reason we need to, it's just extra help in EMS.
It's okay.
Yes.
So I, I think you didn't say this, but adding an employee is going to reduce the overtime.
Yeah, so.
And so that's, it's really not as expensive as it looks.
Yeah, and this got.
Michael, did you want to ask a question? I think he was just.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think it's on the last one. So basically, adding a, adding a, an additional employee, we believe would be between two and three hours, between two and three hours of overtime a day. On every day, we have that, that two-man EMS crew scheduled. And so it's really a benefit, reduces the overtime, but it would also improve our ability to respond to cardiac arrest and things like that as, as needed and stuff. And it's, it's really been a good program. I can't stress enough, hon, when we altered those schedules and put them on a, on a forty-hour schedule and put them on these peak hours, it's almost like putting an extra bank teller on over, over noon hour, busy times, or an extra waitress. And, and we've, we've started doing that in the fire service. And eventually, the adding a two-man, an extra ambulance during those peak hours would really be a benefit to us. And, and it would really make our operation a lot smoother and a better customer service. So I guess that's about, yeah.
Chief, you touched on, if I want to circle back on, on the ISO rating, how often do we get rated or audited, whatever you call it?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we get, we get audited every five years on that. And it's, it's quite a process. It's about a six, seven-month process, getting ready for it and stuff. And anytime we make any improvements or anything, we are able to contact the ISO office. And like I say, if we'd add a staff or a pumper or something that would, would help improve that, we could, we could actually.
So, so we're a couple of years into, I mean, we got a lot coming up now.
Yes, that's a, I believe it's twenty, or about a year, a little over a year. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, somewhere near.
Because I know I've talked to enough insurance agents that are also seeing, you know, personally what it's done. I mean, that's been a huge savings to the community as far as the dollars that we've saved. And I know you, you pointed out, we came up short a little bit in that rating or in that area that, boy, I hate to see us lose that rating just because we are, you know, a person short. And so I guess I'm wondering, if we were to add a person, when would we need to do it to ensure that, that it gets reflected in our continued ISO rating?
Well, actually, within, within the next couple of years before the next audit would be the time where we'd really have to make sure that was done in case we lost in some other, other areas. We actually monitor that, that score a little bit after going through it to make sure we're prepared more than two years out. So it would be in the next couple of years as far as the ISO where we'd have to worry about that declining. And so this would be more for just the, the need of, of an EMT right now. And, and you do bring up a good point though, because it is EMS assignment, but our, our ambulances also go to our fire calls. And they are trained as firefighters, so they actually will help towards the ISO rating as well. If we would just call them EMTs and they weren't trained in fire, even though that's 99% of their job is EMTs, they would not qualify under the ISO for a response. So it's a good point, but that's why we cross-check, cross-train them into, into fire, so.
Thank you, slide up.
Oh, yes. Yeah, so.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I'll be much quicker, and I'm not as pretty without a tie, I feel bad. Firemen sure look nice. I do appreciate the mayor and the work that she's done and the transparency that she's had with us, especially at the police department. And we recognize the budgets are really, really tight. We are grateful for the council for giving us an additional officer last year. And I think some numbers are going to be coming out that you're going to see the benefit of it. Because of the training and everything else like that, it takes time to get an officer out in the street. We currently still sit well below the national average of two officers per 1,000 residents. We sit at 1.6. Our officers are responding to about 61 calls a day. And typically, we have set a minimum mandatory staffing at four officers on a shift. So on a 12-hour shift from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM and 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, we have a minimum of four officers. And a lot of time, especially today, for instance, I came in at six to cover the shift because we're short. We have training and people on vacation and we have turnovers. So we're still way short. Some good news is that the COPS grants from the federal government are reopening. So we're really looking at that. They're going to be opening hopefully in the near future. So we're going to have an opportunity to apply for some grants to fund those officers. So I think, I think that's going to be beneficial. I really want to push for the record, the part-time records clerk. They're really, last year, we gave up that full-time position and thinking that our detective administrative assistant could handle the backfill and things like that. Well, that didn't turn out the way we thought. Those guys are really, really busy. Their fingerprints are coming in like you wouldn't believe. So when you apply for a job and you need to be fingerprinted, they come to the police department and it's a small fee. So that part-time clerk would fill in for the time, the lunch periods or the vacations when the records are gone, as well as generating a little bit of revenue through fingerprinting and that type of thing and collecting fines on parking and all that. So if there was some consideration, it would really be for that, that part-time clerk. And obviously, we want to get three more officers to make our, each squad to have seven. But we understand that budgets are, are conservative, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I will reiterate, every single one of these requests is absolutely valid. And in spite of the gloominess of this, I want you to know, I think it's very possible that we'll be able to meet all of these requests. And I want to tell you how. So move on here, there, we do have options. And obviously, the first thing is to reduce our expenditures. And we've, we've been doing that. We've been working very hard at that. And I commend the staff for their looking for ways to be efficient and not waste the taxpayer dollars. So that's a no-brainer. One thing that we've been talking about is adding a street assessment charge. And this is not a tax per se, but it generally goes on the tax bill. This is a tool in our toolbox for funding our departments that we're not using. Other communities use this tool, we do not. And this could generate quite a bit of revenue without a whole lot of impact to individuals. So if we charged the same way that the city of Sioux Falls charges people, it would be on the average about eighty-five dollars a year per property owner. So that's an extra fee that would possibly itself pay for all of our snow removal in the general fund, which would then free those funds up to add a police officer, to add a records clerk, to add a firefighter, to add an HR generalist. It would, could single-handedly solve our problems. But if we're unsuccessful, we need to be thinking about all of our options. We're looking at that. We're also looking at adding a stormwater utility charge. Again, this is a tool in our toolbox that we're currently not using. And we are probably the largest city in the state of South Dakota that does not have a stormwater utility. Most of the other cities have one already. And it's typically two to three dollars a month per single-family home. So thirty-six dollars a year. And that could go on your utility bill or it could go on the tax bill. It's done both ways. We've hired a consultant to help us look at this and figure out the feasibility of it. And literally, we have books of needed storm sewer improvements in our city that total probably forty million dollars and things we don't have money to put aside for. And we put a drop in the bucket aside to do that stuff. And if we had this money available, we'd be able to really increase the level of service. And it would help out with the problems that we're experiencing in the general fund. Another one is to increase the fees for our recreation programs, which we did a little bit, but we could do it more. We, we do have low rates for participating in our recreation programs. So that's an option for us. And also, what I've suggested is an increase in transfer from the enterprise funds. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that we increase the transfer from the sewer fund, which is already not charging us a sewer bill plus giving us eight percent of their revenue, not suggesting it on the garbage bill, which the same, we don't pay a garbage bill, plus they give us eight percent of their revenue. But I'm asking to draw the line where we don't pay a utility bill for gas, water, and electric. We would pay it, but then they would reimburse us, so we break even. That's what I'm hoping for. So I have asked for that. So what, what is the potential of these various different actions? The street assessment could be from five hundred to thousand to a million dollars. And that act, that action is probably the single best direct benefit to the general fund. Stormwater utility is right in there, three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, which would also benefit the capital improvement fund, maybe even more so than the general fund. Increasing, oops, increasing the revenues from park and rec fees, that's not a huge one. I, I figured a one percent increase in fees across the board would generate about fifteen thousand dollars. So three to five percent increase on our rec fees would generate forty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. Well, that's one more employee. And I mean, it's worth mentioning. And then I, of course, I have already factored in an increase in transfer from the municipal utilities department. Again, a community decision that needs to be made. But that department does have reserves and is, could do this without raising rates. The total impact of all of these things would easily pay for all those unmet needs. So we'll proceed with that. Now, the next fund, oh, I, I should point out, the external organizations are in the general fund. And a lot of people have talked about that. They are frozen, just like all the other departments. Every external organization is budgeted for the same amount that they got in two, twenty-nineteen's budget. So I know numerous external organizations requested additional funding, and none of them are, in my budget, receiving additional funding, so.
Mayor, can I make a couple of comments?
Sure. We have Steve Lehner, the municipal utilities director.
Thank you, Sarah. Can you go back to the last slide? I've heard this a couple of different times, and I, I just gotta make a couple of comments. Utilities department does not have ample reserves and excess revenues. Rates would be affected. And let me just explain how we do that. We had a reserve study done, and we had a third-party study consultant come in and give, give us this study. We have so many days of working capital in our gas, water, and electric departments, that's our minimum reserves. And then we have collected over that, I think sixteen million is our minimum reserves. And then we have collected over that, but those monies are actually earmarked toward some large projects that we have going on. One of them is the Fifteenth Street, Fifteenth Street substation, which is a four-million-dollar project. We have a gas project that's coming up, where we have to increase the size of our tap for the whole community. So we have a large expenditure dollars, that one could be five million. So we have large expenditures coming up that aren't included in those, in those minimum reserves. So maybe, maybe a little bit of one-on-one on, on utility rate-making and one-on-one on, on, you know, our, our funds. For example, you said thirty million dollars was our electric fund revenue, thirty million revenue. That's, that's true, but seventy-five percent of that goes right back to Missouri River Energy Services. So there's only twenty-five percent of that that we have to, we have to work with. So when, when you talk about charging electricity or not charging electricity, we have to pay for seventy-five percent of what goes through for our wholesale provider right off the bat. So it is a cost to us. And we charge ourselves electricity in, in natural gas and water. And we get charged, we, we get charged for our sewer and we get charged for our garbage. So we have to charge ourselves because that's, that's a, that's a pass-through from Missouri River Energy Services, our wholesale supplier. So I just wanted a couple of comments there. And I would, I would be happy to sit down with city council members, so we don't get a quorum, and, and do a one-on-one on, on revenues and reserves and, and all of those issues if, if we would like. And I, I would, I would offer that to the mayor and staff, too. I, I'll also make mention that we pay for our natural gas, that's a pass-through from our supplier, just like the electric fund. So just because we charge X amount of dollars for natural gas doesn't mean that's all profit. Most of that money goes right back to the supplier. So that was just a couple of comments I wanted to make. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me or not.
I got a couple, Steve.
Sure, Bruce.
What is our total reserve dollar amount at this point in time? Where, where are we sitting?
Our minimum reserve, oh, I got that right here. And that's, it's, we bring this out at our board meeting, it's public information posted every month. Our minimum, our minimum cash reserves is sixteen and a half million. Our current, our current reserve amount is twenty-two million, so there's a difference of six-point-four million. Now, again, out of that six-point-four million, we're building a, a natural, or a natural gas, increasing a natural gas tap in a substation. And we have other large projects on the five-year capital budget, such as another substation up north, plus a lot of transmission lines to provide adequate electricity to the northeast part of town, plus any other growth that we have. The, the substation that we're building right now is, is strictly related to Terex and all the facilities that will be going in around the Terex facility. So that, that load plus everything else was, was gonna overload our system, so we needed another source.
If, if we do transfer, if we did this, would that, would that warrant an increase on your end?
Correct, yeah, it would. We, we would, we would have a rate increase to cover the costs, that, that, that significant of a cost.
Thank you.
So, and, and we, and I can, we can spell that out in a one-on-one session if, if, if needed, so. Glenn?
Steve, ju, can you just put, put a rough ballpark estimate as to what that rate increase would be? You know, per, per user? I, I don't want to put you in the spot, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it would be hard, it would be hard for me to come up with that off the top of my head. It depend, it would depend on how much the utility board wants to transfer.
Well, I'd love to say that, I mean, let's say you, you bite the bullet and transfer the full amount. I mean, how much would that, how many, you got like fourteen thousand customers, something like that?
Thirteen thousand, well, thirteen thousand electric customers, seven gas, seven, seven water.
So it's not work out, probably five dollars a month, something like.
Actually, nine, nine, what's that?
Something like five dollars a month, something like that.
Five dollars a month on the utility bill if we were to do that.
Okay. Just, just to get some, some feel for it, thank you.
I think we, I think we calculated as a rough number here a while back, so. Beth?
Hi, is there a possibility that there's someplace in the middle on that?
Well, that would be up to our utility board.
But that would be something I would welcome a conversation, you know, how you want to get together. I, I always say that there's, you know, always someplace in the middle, or one side or the other. But it would be good to at least have that conversation.
And Sarah has had that conversation with our utility board members over the past weeks. She's, she's met with them individually. So I, I would, she probably has a better idea that, how those went than I did. I've got a few comments, but I, I wasn't involved with those, so.
Well, and I basically just told them, it's, it's up to them. And it's a community decision, and, and they have an important decision to make. Because if, if they aren't able to transfer, we gotta find this money somewhere or, you know, draconian measures to make the budget balance. And I, you know, I, I will reiterate, I do believe we can work ourselves into a better situation. The other funds are not in this spot. They're not. And we'll get to those. We're, we started with the general fund, and that's the tough one. The six largest non-revenue-supporting departments are police, ambulance, street, fire, snow removal, and library. And, I mean, they are, they feel shorted, every single one of them. And that's a terrible position to be in. I, I would hope that if municipal utilities isn't able to do this, which is not coming to the table anywhere near the extent that the other enterprise funds support the general government functions, that they would join in with all the other city departments and freeze their budgets and don't add any new equipment and, you know.
I, I will comment on that, we do that every year. We've had, we had sixty-two employees twenty years ago, and we have sixty-one employees today. We've, we've done more with less and used technology and, and that kind of thing for those numbers. But twenty years of sixty, sixty, roughly sixty people. So we, we only really budget necessities. The Highway two-twelve project, for example, we have to move our stuff, that, that gets in the budget. We, we don't have excessive charges and, and.
I know you don't have excessive charges. We have the lowest utility rates around, and, and that goes for all of our enterprise funds. And we're very proud of it, and I don't want to disturb that. I, that's a good selling point for us. It's wonderful that we have municipal utilities. It's very strategic for our community, but it is part of our organization. The municipal utilities department budget alone is almost equal to all of the other city departments combined. And, you know, that's a revenue-generating department, and the other ones are not. So I, I hope that the board will, I know they will take this into deep consideration. It, I know it's a big ask, but if the answer's no, then they're going to be impacted just like everyone else in the other measures that we need to take, because we need to figure this out as a community.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anybody else have a question for me? Adam?
I don't have a question, I just have a conference.
Mike?
It, it kind of relates to utilities, but it kind of relates to everything, but it's kind of. So this is something, looking at the budget going forward, that we do really need to consider and, and put a lot of weight on. But as a community, as we continue to grow in an outward fashion, and we continue to add new roads, and we annex in new areas where we're supplying electricity, new areas where we're supplying water, sewer drainage, anytime we add a utility somewhere, we have to bear in mind that we're going to be the one that inherit that cost. And we already kind of conceived this year, because we're doing a, you know, road projects, but every time we grind up a road and we repave a road, it, it's a big expense. Roads aren't cheap. So, and, and those that are familiar with like Strong Towns, all that stuff, I mean, you're very familiar with this viewpoint. But every time we expand outward, we're adding more utilities that we're going to have to support. And this ties back to what the mayor's saying, that we, we need ways to fund this. If we're not generating new tax revenue, we're going to dig ourselves into a hole with more and more roads that we need to maintain, that we need to plow every year, that we need to keep utility functions up on. And we just need to make sure that we balance that budget, because many communities around the country dig themselves into a hole by just continuing to outwardly expand. So just as we're considering the budget, as we're looking ahead here, we either need to find ways to fund it or we need to quit going outward and start going up. But it's just something to bear, keep in mind, and just know that it's not a sustainable system to keep doing this just purely off the general fund and expect to still be able to grow and continue to add roads and add power lines every time we do that. That's a new cost that we have to maintain every year. So just, that's something to bear in mind.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Lehner, would you care to comment? What impact this issue out at the state level that's being researched with the summer study and hopefully will be resolved in the upcoming legislative session? What potential impact will that have on you and this ask from the city?
Well, i, if, if Senate Bill sixty-six in some form gets passed and, and Cottington Clark is, is successful on getting rid of our agreement, service territory would be frozen. And our rates and Cottington Clark's rates are, are enough, far enough apart that a, a local or a business that wants to come to town, if they have to annex outside of the city limits, they would pay more for their electric utility, not the rest of them. Gas, water would, would remain the same, but they would pay a significant amount more for their electricity. And they would probably decide to find another si, another site or another city or another state to move their business to. And, and my analogy with that is, is, let's say a manufacturer comes that, comes to town that wa, that makes green widgets. And they, they do their due diligence, they want to come to Watertown, so they pick it. But, but they have, they have to annex a chunk of land in, and they'll have to pay more for their electricity. But they find out that there's another company in town that makes a similar green widget. They won't be able to be competitive with that company. So they, they will, they will decide to go somewhere else, unless they can find a spot somewhere in, in Watertown. Now, I will tell you that our service territory and electric site is, is larger than the city limits. So we have room to grow without ever annexing property into Cottington Clark's territory. We've only done four annexations, two of them have been with Titan, one with Cottington Clark and one with Northwestern in the last ten years. So it doesn't happen that often. We've only done eleven in the last seventy-five, since nineteen-seventy-five, so the last forty-five years, wherever my math is there. But it, it'll have a lot less of an impact on Watertown than it will on a lot of the rest of the state. And I know it's a long answer, I apologize for that, but.
Question?
Dan?
Would you think that there'd be a hue and cry if you would raise rates five dollars a month?
Oh, yeah. There would be a, there, there, there's a, a lot of public input that comes our way when we raise rates by two dollars, a dollar and a half. That does concern me, because that, that will, that'll light up our, light up our phones and, and we answer those, those calls, so. And Dan, especially if it's to transfer to the city for other city services?
Why especially? Those are citizens. It's a, it's a six of one, half a dozen of another. I mean, if they don't pay for it on utility rates, they're gonna pay for it on other user fees. And, I mean, it's our community, it's, we need to raise this money. We aren't gonna do away with our police department. We're not gonna do away with those departments which don't generate revenue. We need to figure out how to generate revenue, and it's gotta come, one way or another.
Not disagreeing with that. We do have a large number of people that are on our, what I'll call, shut-off list every, every month that have to make a decision on whether or not they buy groceries or pay their utility bill. And those folks don't use the rec center, and those folks don't go to the zoo, and those folks don't use a lot of the city amenities that are out there, so.
Right, it's a tough question.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Steve. Yes, Kristen?
Are you getting ready to move on to the next fund?
I was, but that's okay.
Okay, so, sorry. I think for clarification, now that we have made it through the general fund, because this kind of is all tied in by fund as far as the budget goes, I did want to point out, if there's no changes at this time by the council, just knowing that what is in the budget before you, because we, we definitely budget off of the expenditures, the hydrant rental and the street lights is removed. So if there's no changes made, know that the ordinance that comes before you in September will not have that. That's two parts. So after hearing from utilities in regards to that, if their board would in turn not agree to what is before them, know that that's not in there. So in January, we would be having a supplement to the budget, which in turn is that seven hundred thousand that we then have to figure out what we're gonna do with. So I don't know if you wanted to have that discussion kind of now, or if we're just kind of gonna wait. But I kind of wanted a little bit of direction just as to if there are any changes to the general fund at this time.
Kristen, which meeting in September will we, will we be acting on the ordinance?
The budget ordinance is actually a two-part. So the first reading is the first meeting in September, second reading is the second meeting, and it has to be fully approved by the thirtieth of September, according to state law.
And help, refresh my memory, coming out of this meeting tonight, are, are, are we looking at, for a motion to approve this budget at this point? Or are we just taking information tonight? Refresh my memory there.
During the hearing process, the only time that we take a motion is if you have any change to what the mayor has proposed. So if at any time you want to add something, you want to remove something that's in the budget, that's when the council will make a motion, and then that is what I will place into the ordinance. So as far as if there's no changes to what is in front of you, this is what you will see on the budget ordinance.
I would recommend that we do change the way this is presented as, you know, the, whatever, they, they have budgeted or they have. they, they have budgeted or they have told us, municipal utilities has told us that there's a ten percent raise in the hydrant fee and whatever. They've, they've told us what the, the hydrant fee and the street light rental fee are. And we can put that back in the budget and then change this to a transfer, an increase in the transfer so that their, um, formulas are not affected. And then, then we're just talking about the transfer amount, which is a revenue, rather than what we're budgeting for an expense. Which, I would suggest that. I think that would be a better way to do that and I probably would have done that if I'd, um, had time. But this was already published.
Do you need a motion for us to do that or is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. Yeah, yes. So, if, if, um, you want to do like as the mayor stated, it would be a motion to place back the hydrant rental and, um, the street light budget with the increases that were provided. And I'll, I'll, I'll do that, I'll put those in based off of what they said. And then I will offset it with the transfer, which then in turn would be decided by the utility board.
Which? I think that, I always like to be a little conservative as well and I would rather look at putting it back than to just kind of start moving forward thinking we have that money. So, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we, um, do what Kristen said.
So, the, the.
No, it's to take it out.
The net result is the same. We put, increase the transfer is what Kristen said.
Yep, right.
So, the dollar amount's the same, it's just a different formula for utilities.
That's why I said what she said. But, I mean, it, so it's, it's. I guess I should ask for clarification then.
Okay.
So, yeah, clarify that.
Okay, so currently, when we approve the ordinance, the ordinance is based, it's what identifies the expenditures of that year's budget. The current one before you does not have either one of those expenditures in it. And it also doesn't have the increase of the transfer. So, I think what we're looking to do is I will put those expenditures into the budget for 2020 with the proposed increases that utilities provided, as well as increase the transfer in from utilities. So, it's still offset like we are anticipating. But if utility board would not, um, approve that transfer, it doesn't, um, affect the expenditure side of the budget.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, so.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I, so I had it right in my head. Sometimes, so, okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, we have a motion by Manti. I know Michael made a motion before, while she was talking. And so, a, a second by Hoyer. Any discussion? Councilman Villahauer?
Do, do we do this, I forget again, uh, year by year? Do we do this fund by fund or do we ta- make one, take one action on the, on the entire budget?
This is fund by fund.
It is by fund by fund, okay. Okay.
We'll forget by the time we get, till the seventeenth fund. Okay, Councilman Roby?
Uh, could you read the motion so it's in the record and we all understand it?
Want me to do that? Okay, so the motion is to increase the hydrant rental, um, budget. I think that was a ten percent increase by utilities, as well as reinstate the street lighting budget with, I believe it was a two percent increase. And then I will also be increasing the transfer in from municipal uti- municipal utilities to offset that, whatever the increase is, which should be around the seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred forty dollars. Councilman Villahauer?
And then come later in the year, if that's not the way it shakes out from the utility side, then we would have a, a supplemental budget or a revised budget, what?
If, now that you've put that in, you won't need a supplemental budget. What would happen is if the comfort level, because we're basically going to be seven hundred and sixty thousand over what we anticipated, the council may need to, um, determine. To me, the biggest one to determine is what are you going to do with the wage study?
Okay.
That's really your only thing that's kind of your major increase as far as the general fund?
Okay.
All right. So, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to the special revenue funds, starting with the park and rec fund. So, um, here's, we have a budgeted increase of two hundred ninety-four thousand, which is about seven point nine percent in revenues. And, um, last year, the major changes were, we increased the tran- the transfer from the BBB fund and, um, we decreased the transfer from the capital improvement fund. So, I, I felt this was more appropriate and I still think it's appropriate. This year, we're doing another increase in transfer from the general fund. Oops, that went a little fast. And it's, two hundred ninety-four thousand is really not huge. The personnel budget is, uh, going up about three point four percent, which is, um, includes the salaries and, and, um, insurance and everything else. There were no significant changes for the 2019 budget. And the only change is due to the projected increase to implement the wage study. And the budgeted health. Then the zookeeper, I mentioned this before, is, uh, the Zoological Society is paying the salary for two years, but they aren't paying the insurance and retirement and the benefits. So, um, that, that's an increase as well. The operating is pretty flat, as you can see there. There's a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase, which is, uh, insignificant. The, um, last year, the major changes were pretty insignificant as well. Increase in a water fee and equipment maintenance. This year, uh, we're having an increase in supervision costs, um, for computer renewal and maintenance. The outlay is, um, a pretty big increase from last year, but you can see how it compares to years prior. It's not really that significant. So, um, these are small numbers. So, they, uh, a, a, a big fluctuation is really not as significant as you might think just because this fund isn't, you know, that big. So, um, we're talking thirteen thousand dollars for things here and twelve. And I really didn't want to get into the weeds on these, um, type of items, but, um, if you have any questions about it, you're free to ask. The total budgeted increase is forty-eight thousand dollars. And as a summary, with four million, um, thirty-four thousand dollars in revenues and projected expenditures of four million two hundred forty-three thousand, that's a deficit of two hundred nine thousand five hundred, which is really pretty close. And, uh, that could easily come out in the wash. Yes, Councilman Villahauer?
Could you back up a, a slot, another slide? Uh, right there, the, the, the golf course turf line tributary roller, which I have no idea what that is. But is that, I, I, I know we've gotten criticism about the, the density or the hardness of our turf. Is that something that's supposedly going to help that situation or is it something totally different?
I'll defer to the park department. They're drawing straws.
Yes, we won.
Now Glenn, what the turf rollers are actually on are reel mowers. There's a black roller that actually grabs a grass, puts it in the basket. This has no bearing on, on the greens at all. We actually do bring it up FYI. We do have a plan within the next two, three weeks. We do have the equipment in place right now to, to address the, the harness issues that you've heard. But no, this is strictly, uh, a, a, a maintenance. They haven't been replaced about ten years and they just, they fail and they just replace, so.
Thank you. All right, the, um, there were no requests not met, so happy day. The park and rec fund is much happier than the general fund, so. The BBB tax fund, the bedboard and booze, um, third penny sales tax fund is next. And I'm on about page one oh eight in the budget book if you're following along. Uh, the, the BBB fund summary, uh, we have about a forty-three thousand dollar revenue deficit, which is actually, um, very realistic and not a problem. The, we're expecting revenues to increase sixteen thousand and expenditures to increase fifty-four thousand. There's a deficit of forty-three thousand. Again, I think that will come out in the wash. The significant changes this year are that, um, we're increasing the convention and visitors bureau budget by sixty-six thousand. And they are doing something that we were contemplating doing in our own, um, staff, which is to add a sports marketing individual, which will help us to, um, generate more tournaments in our town, which in turn helps us generate more revenue. We have all these wonderful new facilities and this will help keep them full. But that's not for this group to decide. That's, I'm just telling that to you for your information of how they're spending the extra money. Councilman Villahauer?
Sarah, you and I have talked about this and I know we as a group in the past have talked this off and on and Kristen, you and I, the conversation is very recently, uh, a- a- about adding, call it a marketing person, whatever, for, you know, s- selling sponsorships, you know, throughout the community, similar to what Ryan Query was doing, uh, for the wellness center and the softball complex. I see there's nothing budgeted for that because I think that's something that would have probably paid for itself. Can you just comment as to why that is not being, uh, considered at this time?
I can. And I, um, I think that the, the simple answer is everyone's just too busy. We thought we'd just copy someone else's job description because when we were having those conversations, oh, Sioux Falls does this, Brookings does this, yeah, they have people. And we call those, no cities have this person. So, this is similar. What, um, the CVB is doing would be part of that, although it's not the naming right type of a thing. And I simply haven't had the time to sit down and draw up a job description from scratch. Neither has anyone else. So, um, if someone wants to take a shot at that, to give us a s- starting point, that would be great. But so far, we just haven't done that. But I do think it would pay for itself, so that's an adjustment we can probably make at any time once we could get that done. And now we do have a new HR director that, um, will probably be looking for extra work. So, she can help with that. Right, Jelaine? She's pleading the fifth. Julie?
I didn't know if that was coming my direction, so.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions for Julie while she's here about the CVB budget? Nope. Thanks for supporting us.
Thank you all for supporting us, we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, they market us and they do a really good job. Uh, the next special revenue fund is the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center Fund. And again, this is a pretty low stress budget. There were, uh, not some, not huge changes in the revenue, but we did have a forty thousand dollar increase in memberships in 2019 and we're anticipating a little bit more than that in 2020, which is great. The wellness center, center personnel costs are going up, um, just because we're, um, hoping to implement the wage study results and we have budgeted health insurance premium increases. Last year, well, for 2019, we did add a janitor slash maintenance worker position, but we're not adding any positions this year. The operating costs, including rentals, maintenance, supplies, travel, training and utilities, there weren't any significant changes for the 2019 budget. And for the 2020 budget, uh, there's an increase in computer renewal and maintenance and an increase in utility costs because utility rates are going up, but it's not significant. The capital outlay, last year, we spent an extra forty-eight five, or put that in our budget for exercise equipment. We're doing a similar thing for 2020. And plus, we're hoping to insulate that outside water slide. It forms ice in winters like we just had. And then it's not safe for kids to go down because the ice is like a blade. So, we're, we're hoping that insulating it will help. There's a lot of warm air circulating through it and if it was insulated, we don't think that will happen. That was not supposed to happen. They told us that would not happen. Councilman Bueller?
That is correct.
We wondered about that and we asked.
Very question.
We asked the question.
They looked at us like we were crazy.
I know.
Were they from the Midwest?
Councilman Lalum?
How are they looking to insulate that?
Wrapping it with, uh, foam, kind of a. I think there's a method. Do you guys want to comment on that?
Kind of like a pipe wrap style? Not putting heat tape on that, are we?
Been working with Benchmark Foam and they can design, uh, a foam that will fit just on each component all the way from the bottom to the top. And, uh, three, four inches thick and they'll be able to color it orange to, you know, match the colors. And then we'll keep it year round, so, yeah.
Awesome. It's nice to have Benchmark Foam in town. Worked out well for us. Other questions for John while he's sitting here? All right, I'll keep going. The, uh, wellness center revenues were, are expected to be one point five nine and million and expenditures one point five five. So, we are very, very close and slightly in the black, which means that our revenues are just slightly higher than our expenses. And, uh, this is really great. Now, the operations, uh, balances out, um, so that's great. Any questions? Uh, the Wellness Center did have a request for a couple of items. A new AC unit and a volleyball power net totaling thirty-five thousand dollars. Were not met because the, they were frozen just like everybody else. Oh, yes, Councilman Lalum?
On that AC unit, is that a replacement or an additional?
That's an additional one, isn't it?
For which location?
Birthday party room, gets pretty steamy.
Probably because it's next to the pool.
Could be, and little kids running around. I don't know if that makes a difference. It probably gets muggy. Okay, are there any recommended changes to that budget before we move on? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the casualty reserve fund, which doesn't even show up on the radar because it's so small. We keep a budget of fifteen thousand dollars in there, um, just in case, right? What's that? Anything that's not covered by insurance would come out of the casualty reserve fund, so. It looks like a big tall bar, but it's, uh, relative. Fifteen thousand dollars is not a big number. The capital improvement fund is next and that's actually, uh, sales tax revenue fund that has a lot of leeway for us. And we, there's a lot we can do with that fund. Does not come with all the restrictions and loads that the general fund does. So, it's a little bit more fun to talk about. Last year, the only significant change was an increase in sales and use tax that was expected. This year, we're also expecting an increase, but not as significant. We're, probably the, the main big difference here is that we're expecting a one point two million dollar grant for doing the Third Avenue Bridge. And we haven't received this yet, so it's a projection. But, uh, we think our chances are very good for getting it. There's an increase in revenue from interest and, um, some other miscellaneous revenue. All in all, a twenty percent increase mostly due because of that expected grant. Now, the expenditures in the general fund, I, I think it's good to compare these. Uh, the significant purchases that we did last year from the general, or from the capital improvement fund were a new ambulance, uh, two point six million dollars spent on street improvements, storm sewer and flood control projects, two hundred thousand. storm sewer and flood control projects, two hundred thousand, recreation facility improvements, seven hundred sixty-five, industrial park, seven hundred forty-two thousand, debt service, three million, and transfers out just shy of one million. So, um, this year, we're buying a fire truck. And the street improvements, look at this number, five point one million dollars put towards street improvements, and I'm thrilled to do that and to be able to do that and to say that we can afford to do that, because we need to do that. Uh, we have, uh, excruciatingly obvious needs in, for improvement in our street system. So, next year, we're planning to tackle quite a bit of them. It's almost a doubling of the amount of money set aside for roads. Um, the storm sewer and flood control project budget is about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Recreation facility improvement, six hundred twenty-five thousand. And industrial parks is, um, quite a bit less, two hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred. Debt service is about the same, and this is our bonds, and, um, that amount didn't change much from last year. And then transfers out significantly less than last year, which is part of the reason why we can put so much more toward roads. But it's a great year for the crap, for the capital improvement fund, um, that increase. So, total revenues, ten point four million dollars, which is an increase in twenty percent of one point seven million. The total expenditures, uh, ten million four hundred fifty-five thousand, which is a twenty-one percent increase in expenditures. So, all in all, it's a wash with only a sixty thousand dollar difference. And so, before I go on though, Heath, do you want to add anything to this? Or, uh, I'll, I'll let him talk about some of the specific things that were requested in the capital improvement fund.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and I don't know, you know, how much detail that we care to get into tonight, but I did, I can give you a general synopsis on how a lot of these numbers were derived. Um, some of these projects in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, that are funded by the Capital Improvement Fund, obviously, um, are the usual routine annual projects. Uh, our mill and overlay, our, um, neighborhood, uh, street repair projects and things of that nature. One of the things that we tried to do this year that was a little bit different was to consolidate as many like projects as we could into one, uh, project to gain some economy of scale in our bidding. And I also tried to restructure some of these projects and how they're funded uh, in a way that I've seen in other communities, it worked well too, as far as the efficiencies of managing the projects. So, for instance, um, if you look at page one nineteen, in the, uh, request for fiscal year twenty, it's about the center column there. Uh, right at the top, you'll see four hundred thousand for cracked sealing and, uh, seal coating. That's a common number that we've used the previous years, and we've carried that over into the next year. Uh, the next line down, you see eighty-five thousand dollar, that's for the long-term transportation plan update. Uh, the line down after that is street improvements. That is our annual mill and overlay project. I wanted to note that that is one of three, um, what I'm calling pavement management system projects. So, we have a PMSA, B and C, schedules A, B and C, that we would anticipate running every year from here out. Uh, the pavement management system A would always be the mill and overlay project for roughly nine hundred thousand. Maybe we can increase it to a million dollars next year or the year after. Schedule B is, for next year, proposed to be the Third Avenue Northwest Street Reconstruction Project that is directly related to the Third Avenue Northwest Bridge replacement. Councilwoman Billhauer?
Heath, if, if we don't get, if we don't get the grants that the mayor referred to, are we, we still need to be replacing that, that bridge, correct?
That bridge is in dire need of replacement, I will say that. Now, if, if we could, uh, limp it along another year, if we happen not to get the grant, I imagine we could, we might have to look at putting some more restrictions on it. Um, I am fairly hopeful that, that the chances of getting that grant look pretty good, according to our big, our bridge improvement grant program score that we have. I believe we're in the sixties, if I remember right, off the top of my head. And some of the lowest grant awards this last go-around were down into the fifties. Uh, but the higher that rating, the better your chances are. So, I think that we were going to have a pretty good chance, uh, of receiving that. But you're correct, if we do not receive it, we would have to look at putting further load restrictions and things like that to limp that along another year.
Thanks.
While the public works director was talking, the PowerPoint crashed. Luckily, I have my IT professional here at my side fixing it. But this might be a good time to take a little break and eat, but Councilman Roby?
I, I recognize that we're putting a big emphasis on this for, as you said, obvious reasons. Do you anticipate it being close to this next year, the amount of money we'll spend on streets?
Do I think that, oh, I would like it to be, yes. And, uh, maybe it doesn't need, I mean, we're not going to replace a bridge every year, so no, it doesn't need to be. That's a big expense. But, um, yes, I would like to dramatically increase the spending that we do on our roads, so that we get ahead of the curve and we can not just maintain the level of service, which if you ask people, people seem disappointed at the level of service of the condition of our roads. And, and I happen to know is really not all that bad. But the public expectation is that it should be better than it is. And, um, I would like it to be better. So, if we can afford it, I definitely want to do that, because it, it leads to a generally happier community. Yes, Councilman Albertson?
Uh, maybe it's for Rob. Rob, can you handle this kind of, you know, it sounds kind of strange to ask a question. Can the city handle this, or do you look now that we'll be doing a lot of bringing people in to do our road work? If we get, you know, take the bridge out, but then take the rest of the money? Do you have the workforce for that?
Actually, I think the, the extra dollars we're talking about, uh, Heath could answer that question better, but, uh, it's more engineering-type projects that we're talking about.
This isn't work the street department will do. This is work we bid out every year, and the, the street department does their maintenance projects, and we, we did not increase the budgets for those. We're, we're doing more rehab and reconstruction projects that we wouldn't be doing in-house. And tho- those are, um, needed projects. Do you want to add to that, Heath?
Uh, if I could go back to Councilman Roby's question, just, just to add a little point of clarity, that five point one three million does not take into account that one point two grant. So, the net expenditure would essentially be roughly four million, not the five point one. I just wanted to point that out, uh, for the record as well.
Right. But we can do a similar, um, length of road rehabilitation, I think, in the, into the future, and that will be to our benefit. So, um, were there any questions about the capital improvement fund or any recommended changes? I have to open my PowerPoint back up, which will only take a second, but, um,
kind of make a comment?
Sure.
Okay, um, and this a little bit echoes off of what I heard Mike say about, uh, growing out, but, um, every time we add a subdivision or we add a new area of town, we gain new roads.
Yes.
And so, that, you know, eventually seems like a good deal upfront. There's not a lot of expense with that road for the first ten years or twelve years, and then pretty soon it starts falling apart, and now we're, I think that's what we're fixing right now. I guess one of the things that would help me feel better is, and I know that Heath's been much, really looking at this too, is when a contractor makes, develops a road and, or puts a road into a development, which will ultimately get the road, you know, for free, what are we looking at for setting standards so that we're not replacing them, you know, because they're only two inches of base and, you know, whatever? Because I think that's the problem we run into with a couple of these situations, with the roads just crumbling apart. And, you know, I, I, I'd like to see us kind of take advantage, not only of using roads that we already have, if we can. I don't know, that's a plant, planner thing, but, but I mean, do we have a way to assure that we're going to get a quality road that we take over when a developer is done? Do you understand what I'm saying, right?
Absolutely, thank you, Councilwoman Manti. Um, so, I guess in my mind, there, there's a twofold, uh, process there. One is the design standards, engineering design standards. Right now, we're working off of, uh, a, a spec book of engineering design standards that we feel are fairly appropriate. Um, they're not formally adopted by the council, and that's the document that we're working to update by the end of this, this calendar year, um, to get, uh, a newly adopted form of engineering design standards. In those engineering design standards for any development, including our own construction projects, we set forth minimum standards for pavement thickness, base course depths, the type of curb and gutter, uh, stormwater utility, sanitary sewer utility, construction, uh, design standards. All those public infrastructure improvements are spelled out, hollered to be designed and subsequently constructed throughout the city. Uh, the second effect that we have in place regarding the development projects is to have a little larger presence during the construction phase of the development projects. And that's something I've started to work on with, with Colin and some of his staff, uh, as far as their engineering technicians, uh, making random checks on the, and, uh, construction phases of the developments and to ensure that we're getting those minimum specs met. It's one thing to design to them, another thing to carry it out through the construction phase. And that's kind of the twofold effect that we try to make that happen.
Kristen?
I do have to jump in and just point one thing out too. As we're talking about the capital improvement fund, um, the conversation about if we can continue to maintain, uh, this type of budget for our roads, um, I think as of now, we can. The other component, though, of the capital improvement fund that is very important to remember is that holds the majority of the city debt. So, mixed into that number, when you look at this, you're looking at the budget not only of our improvements for that year, but remember, um, currently in this budget, you're seeing it's a little over three million dollars that's going to go to debt. So, any future action and choices that the council and the community make, um, anytime we increase that debt, there again, we increase our current year's ability, um, for those capital improvements. So, I did just want to point that out.
Okay. So, if we bond, there's debt service on a bond, that comes out of the capital improvement fund, on a revenue bond. So, just keep that in mind for future reference in your back pocket. So, any recommended changes to the capital improvement fund? Not seeing any, so I think we should take a, a break, and there's walking tacos here. Please let the city council go through first, and I think there's probably enough for everybody in the room, but just in case they're not, you all folks can all leave if you need to and go grab a bite, and they're kind of hostage, so. And, and these folks too. So, um, please help yourself, and I'll get the rest of the food out.